I'd like to call the June 26 meeting of the Power Select Board to order. The time is 6:30. This meeting is being recorded by Area 58 Community Access Media Channel 9 and posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the front page of our website for a listing and application. Would you all please stand for a pleasure.
(Inaudible) 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 Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially we lift up our prayers, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Okay, first item on the agenda, as always, citizens' participation. Are there any citizens that would come up, like to come up and make a statement? State your name. Idris.
(Inaudible) 148 Plumb, student at Carver. Water is our most precious resource. We know this. So many towns around us are struggling with it. You can't live where there's no water. You can't work where there's no water. You can't build where there's no water. And I, as, and the situation as I understand it right now is, there's no water. There's no water for the people who need it. There's no water to develop businesses in North Carver. The DEP has stated that no new commercial business can be added on to the Millborough line. Millborough is serving us out of the grace of the state and the grace of Millborough under emergency order. We're on the hook for this plant until the year 2049, and please correct me if I'm wrong. So this town will be paying for it. This town made the decision years ago to provide water for the citizens and the development of this town. In the past few years, more and more citizens have found that contamination in their water has affected their health, their safety, their livelihoods, and their homes. I'm here to support the applicants from North Carver who have skin in the game, who are here to pick up a failed system. It's not going to be an easy task. It's not going to be a quick task. By any luck, it'll take a year if we're tremendously lucky, but it is unlikely that if we're not, as a town, up and running this, that it won't be a priority for anybody else or anything else. We can't transfer it. All the permits are in our name. We can't develop North Carver without this, and I think the residents of Carver are heavily dependent on and looking forward to the development and commercial development that can take place in North Carver. It's one of the few places in Carver that any sort of development on long-term scale can take place, and it can't do that without water. So I'm here to support the North Carver residents that have applied. They seem well-qualified, intelligent, and hard-working people. We've already suffered through many, many years of poor management, indecision, and neglect on the system, and it's time for people with, with skin in the game to fight for, for themselves, for the town, and for the future of this town and the people that might end up under contaminated water or struggling with water issues. That's all I can say. Thank you for your time tonight.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else that came up to the table and make any statement? Seeing no one coming up?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Sure.
So just a couple statements. I do want the board to know, when we posted the meeting Monday afternoon, I actually stepped out of the office. I had a dog disappointment. I did see that the Conservation Commission had a meeting at 7 o'clock upstairs in Room 1. I told Shelby to change the meeting room. Those locations are down here. When I got back to the office, I did have an email from the Conservation Commission, administrator person, telling me they would move their meeting. I told Shelby to keep it here. I just want the board to know they did reach out to us to, to move their meeting. They were going to, you know, accommodate us. I thought that was a good thing. And then the other thing I want to say is, I know the last meeting we had, there were a couple of applicants who were not in attendance. We're going to change our procedures for how we invite people when they're being appointed to make sure they know that there's a request from the board, they do attend. I don't know if we're going to go with a form letter or just a standard email, but kind of all the same language going to everybody, again, inviting them to the meeting. And I want to apologize to anybody who, who didn't understand that their, their presence was requested by the board. That's all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it's like it is a comment of what Mr. Cannon just said. I think whatever we send out, whether it's a form letter or an email or however we send it, it ought to, it ought to state, you know, that they're invited to the meeting and they'll have an opportunity, clear state, they'll have an opportunity to address the board. And I think it ought, it ought to state what time they're going to be on the agenda with some type of general statement saying, hey, all agenda times are approximate and please be there early because we could, we could get to you earlier, somewhere in that effect. Just a suggestion.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay. And again, I'd like to thank everyone for taking time out of their lives, their busy schedules to come here for this second reading, to all these applicants. I guess looking at, I'll go by the same order that's on the agenda, but I think Mary Dorm notified us that she couldn't make it tonight, so we'll go with Douglas Fix.
Yeah.
Oh. Hey. I guess, would you like to tell us why you want to be on this commission? Give us some on this, on the North Carver Water District? And what about your background?
Well, something about background, I've been, I've worked at Hanson for like a half years, went close, and then from there, I went to Duxbury. I've been at Duxbury, worked for the water department for like 23 and a half years now. And I'm a former, I came in as a treatment operator. I got my treatment license, I got my D3, I got my treatment license. So I've been groundwater since, since I was 20 years old in all aspects. And I just think my knowledge and work, you know, the number both the water industry and everything brings some help to the town of Carver, which way they want to go. Now, it's going to be a process and we'll see what, see what happens.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, just the same question I asked everybody at the last, last week. If you were appointed, you would have to run for reelection next year. Would you plan, would your plan be to run for election next year?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I have.
Anything else?
Me.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Bell.
Yeah. Hi, I have a couple of questions. You were on the board before, correct? And you didn't run for election when you were supposed to, to keep it up, right? So that's the first thing. When you were on the board, did you do site visits to the plant?
Yeah, I did one, I went there one time.
Went there one time?
Yeah.
Do you know, did you sign in the logbook when you went there?
No.
Did you know where the logbooks were?
No. Like I say, it was just a quick start by calling, met the operator, and just kind of got a quick labs, and I was just kind of encouraging that that plant looks like it paid off. Right plant.
And when you looked at that plant, what did you think about it?
Yeah. It's small. Small.
Okay. What about the comments of it?
Ah, they were in the process of working on it, so it was in disarray.
Okay. You have plenty of experience, don't get me wrong here. I'm looking at this from a non-water person, and I'm sure you saw my video and about this place and the pictures that are there, and there's more of them, how bad it is. It doesn't happen in one day, all these issues that are in that plant. The outside water retention area where the water drains into there, how is that supposed to look?
(Inaudible) you know, but, I mean, I'm not used to like the groundwater storage tanks. We have elevated tanks, so to me, it's, I just saw it, and I was just like, it's kind of not, not good to talk.
And did, since you're in the industry, did you look at the laws related to water commissioners or what our rules and regulations and what we are, what we can and can't do? Are you familiar with those?
It's been a while. Like I say, I was in water water commissioners at Hanson for a couple, like three years when I was at Hanson, but, and then I was back in 2006, I believe, and then come back here, but I know you, I completed an initial, I suppose. But, yeah.
And what, what years were you on as the member of the water district?
For?
For a year.
Um, I think I was there for just one year and a year and a half ago.
So 2022, 23?
Yeah, roughly one year.
Mm-hmm. I have a question. If you looked in a logbook and you saw something that said 62322, and then you switch to the next page that says 6223.
Okay.
So that's a year with no documentation to that plant. What would be your estimate of what should be done?
Uh, you're supposed to log in and records are huge, and then you can take the show. So, mm-hmm.
Okay. Good. Anybody else have any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
So you had just finished your term on the North Carver Water District, correct? Before this election, and then you decided not to pull papers for that? And I'm going to ask everybody, why didn't you want to pull papers for the election?
Um, I was swamped at work. We lost four plant operators, so I was working seven days a week. I was on and running the water plant, so I just had too much on my plate.
Okay.
And I worked a year and a half, seven days, because we were so short on end, it killed me. And just trying to, it was so well, we couldn't do both.
And your work schedule is freed up now?
Oh, yeah.
That's why I had second question, why decided to, I want to ask, when I do open, I'm going to ask everybody that.
Yeah.
Why all of a sudden now?
Yep. We're, we're actually, as a dry question, we're going to be told folklore. Yeah. Yeah. Like I say, this, this treatment, I need to be addressed.
Great, thank you.
All right, good. Just a few questions. What was your involvement with the small water systems and what was your opinion of their ability to maintain the plant?
Uh, really didn't have much contact with them, whatever. I just went there one time and got the handle on it, and they communicated very well, but I think they did the best of what they could do.
And was, were the commissioners involved in making sure that all proper documentation got filed on certain dates? And that, I guess that would mean going to small water systems and saying, hey, you need to meet these deadlines? The small water systems do it on their own, I think.
I, from my understanding, I believe that lots of small water systems wasn't in control of the water plant. They're supposed to do all big work, then they're the ones with licenses and everything. So I figured we would pay them for it.
And when you talk about the Carver rule, is it in Duxbury?
Yeah.
And it's an unfit question, but when you're comparing, I mean, how many people does Duxbury, does the plant service?
Ooh.
Ballpark?
High rating, about 6,000.
So 6,000. So are the two plants like apples and oranges, or are there similarities, or?
No.
Okay.
Like I say, we have about 10 wells, two tanks. Our smallest well puts out 220 gallons a minute, and our biggest well puts out close to 400, and like I say, we have 10 sites. Okay. And we just pumped 2.4 million gallons of water yesterday.
And when you were on the North Carver Water District, if you remember, 22, 23 you were on?
Yeah.
What were some of the bigger challenges that you had?
Getting the thing up and running and just, it's, it needs, it needs tank, just a high, isn't, is, I don't think it's really designed.
Thank you. Any questions? No? Thank you.
Sure, well, thank you. Thanks.
All right. Let me get this right, Mr. Maynard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just for the record, name and address.
(Inaudible) 148A, Close Street, North Carver.
So we have some new members there. Mr. Maynard, would you rather, would you like to give a little summary of what you presented last time?
Not sure I can speak with the eloquence I used last time, but (laugh) I must take any notes. I was really shocked and surprised to find out that there was nobody other than the chairman serving on the North Carver Water Board at town meeting. I've been very, I've been very brave myself and haven't been paying close attention, so I thought that I might want to into town affairs. So I said, oh gee, oh gee, oh gee, there's something I should do. I live in North Carver. I live in the affected area. I'm waiting for water to hook up. Supposed to have water to live with yesterday. Didn't happen, didn't happen today, so I've been running on buying bottled water. No intention of selling my house right now. It's the thing, because I couldn't. This directly affects me. I don't have any great personal knowledge of water systems. I came by a knowledge of the history of this whole thing, rather unexpectedly. I bought a piece of property in North Carver in 1921 and wound up being the private owner of the land on which the North Carver Water Treatment Station sits. I am the love of the owner of that property. I've since sold that part of it. But the property transfer came with a gigantic stack of papers, which, being a geek, I sat down and read during cold winter nights and read all about vinyl chloride, the ancient and distorable North Carver landfill, the reason for the water district and the reason for the pump, well, not for pollution per se, but the treatment station, Millborough Water, and kind of educated myself on that. It became a real problem. We, I tested the water when I built my house. That was the condition of buying the property. I had it tested, cleared, tested by, well, hired it, but that's, that's good for you. A few years ago, I found that we're supposed to be getting tested, but we weren't. And I thought that if we were getting, I wanted to get tested, and apparently on one test of, of many, there was a trace of vinyl chloride. So the doctor was not liable, but we've been on bottled water since. I feel like that, I'm not a quick-lance kind of person. I'm an IT guy. I troubleshoot things. I, I look at something and I say, how do you troubleshoot it? What's, what's the logic about things? What's, what's like a failed system? Look at a failed system, you say, what, how do you fix it? What are the parts that are failing? What are the processes that are failing? What can you jettison? What do you actually absolutely have to do this week, this month, this year? What do you budget for? That sort of thing. So basically, getting an idea of the whole project would be the first thing I'd probably want to do, because it is a project. It's not an ongoing concern. It's a project, and that's how I would look at it. Like I say, my personal interest is pretty much, you don't do anything in the game as being a member of a citizen of this town. And, you know, just, I can still, my old man used to always say, if you want something done, you didn't do it yourself. There's no one else going to do it for you. So that's, that's kind of what I'm like with me. I'm, I'm there to show up and pick up a shovel or show up and pick up the phone and, you know, I think the strength I would have, that would be basically the law, troubleshooting, integrity, just following through on things and getting, you know, I'm not afraid to pick up the phone and get in somebody's face. So, but I'm not, I don't want trouble. So that's, no, no great, no great political theme here. No, no campaign slogan or anything, just public service and also the beginning of this meeting, then openings and vacancies on town boards, and I've been hearing that for a couple of years, so that's why I put my name on.
Any questions here? Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Just the same question, Mr. Maynard, I know I asked you this in the last meeting, so I'll just ask you again. If you were, if you were appointed, you plan on running for reelection, running for election?
That would be my intention, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Time.
I asked my question, I'm, I'm happy with it. And I think you pretty much answered my question that at the town meeting, we saw that there was some openings. That's why I decided to approach you.
Yeah, I, I'm one of those people who does seem to get involved in things sometimes, but I don't go looking, running around saying, looking for a cause. It just, stuff seems to find me, and I don't usually, I don't usually go looking for it. If I'm needed, I come and try and help, and next thing you know, you're up your own wall, so.
Well, this will be a big adventure for you.
Yeah, certainly will be.
And you had mentioned you're on, you're not on the North Carver Water.
I am, I'm waiting, I'm waiting, yeah.
Okay.
In fact, the fire hydrant they put in, in my driveway, my driveway is a great landmark. I think my driveway is one of those dirt roads that runs back to the logs and no, I find my house, nothing. Hey, this beautiful red hydrant right down in my driveway. I found it, yes, and no problems, so. And it's a reminder, the water's coming, the water's coming.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Eric Wheeler. Please state your name and address.
Eric Wheeler, Franklin Road.
Would you like to give us kind of your background or?
Yeah, so 1990, out of high school, entered the wastewater industry. Proceeded to stay with that through 2000, then expanded into the water industry, providing services for both. Ran that right up and through about 2005, 2006. Then I moved over into an operations leadership role. I continue to work in both industries, and I deal with the five big operators, pretty much located all Massachusetts, the Woodard and Curran's, the Small Water, Whitewater, Weston and Sampson, Aryan. Deal with them on a, probably a monthly level on the operations end. My supervisors deal with them in the field itself. oversee a book of business about 39 million a year, manage your P and L, 73 employees. So that business aspect and then the experience with the operators and what they're keyed up to do led me over to North Carver Water from that prior setting.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, well, same one. If you were appointed, do you plan on running next year?
I do. Yes.
And I guess I, I, as I'll ask you, the question is sort of hanging out there. So you were recently on the board.
I was.
And you stepped down, and now here we are.
Yes. So I began on the commission, I think it was August of '22, first week of September, '22, somewhere in that timeframe. I think it was just after that, the filters went offline. So we weren't doing too much at that point. We were up for a period of time, dug in deep with the commissioner at the time, Mike Bellmery. Lot to learn about the plant. There's a lot of moving parts, a lot of parts that have a fiscal impact on the town of Carver, and a lot of policies and procedures that kind of moved along. We tried to move it a little bit at a time. It's a lot to overcome. There were prior boards. When the plant went online, I think it was about 2012, roughly, it was the goal to pay off the debt. And hit it on the head. Right now, it's $5.6 million through, I think, 2046, to pay for what's there. That's not without any modifications. Looking at it on the business aspect, we focused on getting a budget together, an operating maintenance budget, establish funds at that time to get them to start maintaining and then prepare for an incident like that happened where we used out the funds and stuff. It is upside down. I'm not going to lie. It was shocking to see the town is paying for the note now, I think it's $246,000 a year. The plant generated about $240,000 a year in revenue. Then the cost to run the plant with the operators, the maintenance, I think were negative $132,000 a year at the end. So the current customer base doesn't pay for, but that's, the payments going out the door, and it can't be expanded on to really sustain a growth. And then income should continue to operate. So an investment, we're kind of an in and pass. That's where the chairman was leading. I thought it was a good point to also depart, that would leave no commission, and it would roll up to the town. And at that point, we could figure out what's going to be in the best interest of the town and then the folks that are on the North Carver Water. We were on Millborough Water. They offered to sustain what's there existing, and then a possibility for the plant to be utilized for the development in North Carver with the monies that can probably be appropriated from investors or how they want to run it up north. Lot of challenges.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Any questions?
So when you went to the plant, how many times did you go to that plant?
From my recollection, from my photos, five times.
Five times?
Yes.
So from 62322 to 6223, did you go during that time?
September '22, I got on the board. I wasn't good time for that. I was there till April this prior year. I was up there just after the plant went down, then with the operators on site, walked around the plant. We did realize, I mean, everything was duct taped and bulbous gum, basically. Parts, faulty parts. It was, it was tough. Everything was kind of apart. They were taking the membranes apart at the time. Probably saw that on everything that was going on in town. We followed up when the membranes were installed. They had a subcontractor come in. I was there the day the delivery came in with the truck. I didn't stay for the whole delivery. The operators were there. Returned. I want to say it was like three months later when they had, or two months later when they had all the pots in, they were getting the system online, and then I think they returned one other time after that when they had the plant up and they fired it up.
And when you went there, did you see the mice droppings and the bug droppings and everything around the plant?
No. I don't recall seeing anything. There was water leakage. I saw the chemical room. It wasn't real bad. I know we had an inspection performed. I want to say it was July or August of last year from TEP, it was signed off on the plant, the condition, and then it went offline in December. I don't think the operators were really in there much after December of last year.
Which brings me to December, is the last time they wrote something in the logbook was 12/1/23.
Possibly, yeah.
So they have no documentation from 12/1/23 to when they left in Mace?
Yeah, it should be in the meeting notes. We would get a water report from them, what they were doing, because with the plant offline, they weren't running the plant. They were doing other things with the, on the service line itself. Meters, backflows, testing of the water on the lines, because they had to still continue to do that even with Millborough line service on.
So my question now comes to the plant out. Why weren't they given the funds to do the maintenance of the building by the water district?
They weren't there. There was no funds for it. We put a budget together. There was no budget, really. It was just covering the costs. I mean, we were going to the town for the money to get appropriated, and it was getting paid back to the town, whatever came in over the course of the period of the repairs, or the fiscal year. But there's no, there was no budget for operations and maintenance, you know, invest in the membranes for when they go again, eight, 10 years, plan on putting them in. I mean, we appropriated, I think it's $50,000 a year. It's like $15,000 to $20,000 over our first year spend. And that's only going from the first, I think that first year, me and Mike were on there, what we could see at that point for repairs. mean, we were going to the town for the money, to get appropriated, and it was getting paid back to the town, whatever came in over the course of period of the repairs, or the fiscal year, but there's no, there was no budget for operations and maintenance, you know, invest in the membranes for when they go again, eight, ten years, plan on putting them, I mean, we appropriated, I think it's fifty thousand dollars a year, it's like fifteen to twenty thousand dollars over our first year spend, and that's only going from the first, I think that first year, me and Mike were on there, what we could see at that point for repairs.
My next question is, you guys made the decision to not do a generator company and gave it to Small Water Systems.
For the what?
For the generator, backup generator there.
Okay.
So, how often did you guys make sure that it was being checked?
That was all part of the, and you can check on this, we weren't involved with the contract with Small Water and what their, their operations were for that plant, even though we're in the North Carver Water Commission, that was all taken care of from operations, the maintenance of the town now, we weren't involved in what their responsibility was at the plant.
Did you look at the laws relating to water commissioners, and what their guidelines are, what they're supposed to do?
So, I deal with a couple of commissioners now, they're basically, they're on the business side of things, they oversee, operators are responsible for the maintenance and taking care of the water system itself, the chairman, the commissioners, they're responsible for the oversee the business part of it, approve funds, make sure the reports come in, that what the operators are doing, and perform for the town.
Okay, they're actually in charge of everything, their name is at the top of the food chain, so everything underneath them falls under them.
Right.
So, it's their responsibility to ensure that everything is being done, we are the overseers of that plant, and whoever's in that plant, working on that plant, doing stuff in that plant, and personally, I just think that it's time for, it's time to move on and.
I agree, it's a, we're a volunteer boy, we need once a month, I know Mike personally was putting in about twenty-five hours a week, talking with the operators, talking with the town, talking with D E P, it needs a full-time operator or somebody to be responsible for the plants in town, I don't think the budget said for it, though.
And then, just to tap on what you'd said earlier, so you and Mike both decided to resign at the same time, okay, with the intent that no one would take that position and it would go back to the town.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? Just following up on that last question, you came up with this, were you advised that that would happen, or?
What's, yeah, once there's no commission, I mean, we're still on Middleborough Water, we don't have a plant running, the responsibility would then fall back on the town or the select yourselves to oversee and then prob, I don't know what the next steps would be, but I assume it would be designated commission, whether it's amongst yourselves, and then make a decision, because there's a lot of pieces in play, are we gonna continue to put money into the plant, are we gonna tie, stay on the Middleborough Water, we're gonna work with the North Carver Development, for somebody that's coming in, I've heard talks, I raised a gentleman the other day that, this discussion, and there's interest up there, with also taking on that plant as well, so there's a lot of different pieces, but it needs involvement from multiple individuals from different boards within the town to make it work.
And, and I'm remembering way back when the P and L that we used to get on the Carver Water District, I know there was a line item, and I think it was, you know, water consultants or something, it was the waste, it was the Small Water Systems line.
Yeah, I think it was around six thousand dollars, North Carver Water.
Yeah, so there was a budget in there for expenses, I'm just thinking, I looked at it way back when, thought that was something like if a valve went or something like that went, that that was part of that budget.
Nope.
So, the six thousand dollars, can you summarize what they actually did for the six thousand dollars?
Their time and labor and testing, and their filing of the reports.
And, and if there was a capital, like the membranes that got replaced, okay, that was something that they recommended to, to the board?
Correct.
Okay.
That, that happened just after I got on, I don't know if that was recommended prior to me coming on the board, when we looked into that, the recommendation from the manufacturer was at least every, I think it's ten to twelve years, they should be replaced.
Okay.
But, it should be run at full capacity as well, that's a, I think that plant's designed for a hundred thousand gallons a day, it should be running at, you know, eighty percent of that at least, it's only running, I think, at forty, forty-five percent, which is worse with the amount of magnesium and iron in the system, so.
Okay, and I think when it first went live, I think two thousand twelve sounds about right, I think it was, am I getting my name right, Mike Woolen?
Yes, I've heard that name, he was actually an employee of the town, I believe.
He was a town employee in the beginning, and we tried doing that with the guys, putting so many jobs, they had skin in the game, and I guess it didn't work, and then eventually Small Water's time, all right, sorry, financial aspect of it, you were saying that, I know the town, since two thousand twelve, has been dumped two hundred and fifty or sixty-five thousand dollars a year into that, and you're, even with that, you're saying the operational cost was a negative one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars ball pocket, is that?
Yeah, so, going off of fiscal year last year, I think they generated two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars roughly, give or take, I don't have them in front of me, as income from the water users, basically, it's a wash on what's paid for the loan, the operating costs, I think it's around six thousand dollars a month for Small Water, utilities, we're running around sixteen hundred a month for the propane, the electric was running anywhere between eighteen hundred and thirty-two hundred dollars per month, and then any costs above and beyond what the operations company are doing, testing outside what is required, that was an additional cost, and then any repairs, we found a lot of stuff, I mean, you might, right away, we didn't want, Small Water had a struggle prior to us, you know, do you want us to fix it? Yeah, do you mean a second one to have in stock, was it, we asked the questions, that's why we established a budget off our first year, I think we generated, it was about thirty-two thousand dollars above and beyond typical operation, it was repairs, so we budgeted fifty thousand dollars a year to cover those, we know it's not gonna recur every year, but we wanted to start putting that money aside for the next round of membranes, you know, eight to ten years.
Got it, thank you. Anyone else? No. Thank you.
So, just to confirm that, when you resigned now, and the reasons you wanted to be back on this commission now?
I'd like to see it through, I mean, it's an in pass, I assumed it would go to you guys and then a decision we made, but I mean, it's gonna involve a lot more people, we didn't get it, I mean, me and Mike sat by ourselves for, I think it was four or five months, because there was no applicants, Mike was leaving, I said, well, hello, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll say. All right, next applicant, Kim Che, and please state your name and address.
My name is Kim Che, I live at one forty-eight Clement Street, for my background, I've been doing environment, health and safety, professional for the past twenty-five years, plus twenty-five years, I hold an industrial wastewater license through the New England Water Pollution Control Commission, my job, part of my job, about just the health and safety, is the environmental aspect, so I manage pretreatment systems for industrial wastewater, I manage the permits, I manage all the testing, ensure that we are in compliance with our local, state and federal regulations, so I'm pretty well versed in mass D E P water regulations and EPA, the health and safety aspect, obviously, when you're treating water, whether it's treatment for drinking water or discharge for treatment to turn it back into drinking water, there's chemicals involved, so the people that you have on the plant, they, you need to make sure that the environment is safe for them to work in, that they're handling hazardous chemicals, that they have the right equipment that they need to protect themselves, I'm personally interested in this, I live in North Carver, the fire hydrants that Mr. Maynard was speaking of also sits in my front yard, so it is this nice little thing, it's very nice, it's beautiful, so, we've been fortunate that our well has not tested positive for anything, but, you know, there is always that concern in the back of my head, that, yes, that we're eventually gonna have to maybe go on water, I have a fat finger put, well, I'm pretty, I'm feeling confident that I'm gonna be okay, but, you know, my neighbors are affected, it's a neighborhood that I live in, and it's something that's really important to me, and, you know, if we want to develop, do commercial development in this town, we're gonna need the infrastructure to support it, and that will include providing the water, especially to the urban renewal area, if they want to build, they're gonna need water, and I think it's very important that we put everything forward that we can to get the system up and running, in compliance with the D E P, and able to support future growth like we want to do, and is outlined in our master plan.
Great, thank you. Any questions from members of the board?
Same, same question.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
No, I was happy the last time, and that's the second question, why now do you, would you like to be on the commission?
Mainly because I found out that two people stepped down and that there was really nobody on the board, Bob was alone, with everything that's been going on in our neighborhood with concerns with the water, I felt that with my background, that I could maybe help in assisting, in achieving this role of getting the system back up and running.
Thank you. And, anyone else? No. Could you just, a little bit of clarity here, I want to make sure I'm not reading this, I'm assuming something, you're a licensed industrial wastewater treatment plant operator, but then you talked about, you seem to have some experience with clean water?
I'm sorry, sorry.
Then it seems like you, you talked a little bit about experience with clean water systems.
I was just saying that the way you treat water, whether you're drawing it up, or you're discharging back to a treatment plant, you use similar chemicals, the system, it's, the system results are not identical, and the processes are a little different.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the boards? No, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you, thank you everyone for coming and coming to this meeting tonight, I'll toss up to the board, do we have any, why don't we talk about, maybe, should we talk about questions or concerns, or we'll go right into motions?
First, before we go into that discussion, I want to thank all four, and Mr. Barry Dormer for stepping forward, I know it's not easy to step forward in this type of stuff, and especially when there's open, so it takes a lot, and I appreciate that, because Mr. Development needs some help over there, and everybody's reached out for that, so I just want to thank everybody for that, it's easy to sit on the sidelines and not get involved, and appreciate that the five of you have stepped forward for that.
And what's unique about, just of what you've said, you know, it's a separate district, but isn't really, you know, because when someone doesn't have clean water, they're not gonna call just the North Carver Water District, they're not gonna call Small Water Systems, the phone's gonna come here as well, so we can't turn around and say, oh, it's not us, it's the North Carver Water District, you know, so it's, it's, everybody has vested interest in it, and so again, we appreciate you all for coming. All right, have we said that, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, as I said it last time, thank you all for applying, it's always difficult when you have more applicants than you have, have positions, when I was chairman, and the North Carver Water District failed, the membranes failed and things happened, this whole board joined with Mike Palmary, Mike Palmary was the only North Carver Water District commissioner at the time, to try to help as best we could, and, and I continued to talk to Mr. Palmary, we talked often, weekly, biweekly, we talked a lot, and one thing I learned from talking to Mike is how complicated an issue the North Carver Water District is, it's not a simple issue, it's not a simple plant, it's very complicated, and I just think that experience with water and with the North Carver Water District is a really important thing, so I'd like to make a motion to nominate Eric Mueller as the North Carver Water District Commissioner.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion, we have a second, any other questions, issues or concerns?
Yes.
It's developed.
Discussion, so, as you heard from him today, he said that him and Mike planned to lead the system at the same time, lead the district at the same time, that's my opinion, they polluted beforehand of a meeting, which is an open meeting law complaint, if they two talked to each other beforehand and said, hey, we're gonna see you later, we're both gonna leave at the same time, and they both did, knowing that I jumped on the board, I would think they would want to stay and continue on, but then hearing more that there was actually a plan ahead of time, that if they leave and no one else is on this board, it comes back to the board's life, okay, and the board's life, and can appoint themselves as the water commissioners if you wanted to at that point, knowing that, and whatever behind the scenes stuff was going on with Middleborough and everything else there, that I don't know about, I have people that say this, that and the other thing, but no matter what, I just look at it and say that with Eric Mueller, he failed, when we needed somebody to be there, he bailed, and my fear is that if he is allowed to get on, and Mr. Fix gets back on, okay, that there's no reason for me to say, because I'll get overruled on everything, and I think that's the, possibly the intent, and if that is, shame, but, to say, I'm gonna no vote on Mr. Mueller, I want new people on the board, we had two people that showed up the other day, actually, three, that showed up the other day for the meeting that we had, and, yeah, I just, I, I don't feel comfortable, I mean, Eric was on the board for a long period of time, only went there six times, I've been there, I can't tell you how many days already at that plant, just me going through that plant, getting estimates from electricians, two companies to come in to look at it, the bugs issue, the mice, it's just, it's just one after the other after the other, and these things should have been done beforehand, I mean, when I walked in that, knowing that lights were out, outlets were exposed, okay, outlets weren't even working, and they had core, extension cords, and this wasn't just a little thing, I mean, anybody can see these things that aren't right in a water plant, you shouldn't have things strewn on the floor, all right, and then the outside pit area, I mean, that has ten, twelve foot trees growing in it, that's just poor maintenance, okay, not poor oversight, and Eric didn't do the oversight he was supposed to as a water commissioner, because as I said before, you're at the top here, everything below you, you're in charge of, doesn't matter if you give it to somebody else to do, all right, and the generator, it's in lockout mode now, because Small Water Systems, they said, hey, you guys hire somebody for it, all right, well, they did, they hired a company to come in, they came in to service once, once, Small Water Systems never had them come back and do another service, all right, that didn't just happen from May seventeenth, when they walked out the door, okay, these are progressive issues that need to be resolved, not a water guy, but you know what, I'm learning a lot right now, okay, and just to kind of go forward too, there's been talk that the Route Forty-four Development is interested in taking over the plant, they're not interested in taking over the plant, all right, because their project is not gonna have enough water to support that plant, to keep it up and running, all right, so, I mean, the town's gonna have to pay for this, because we have to provide water to them, Middleborough's not gonna do it, so we really need to look at those, and we need to have people that have skin in the game, number one, and we need to have people that have a history in it, and I think the two other people that we voted for, Dan and I, should be the people, so.
Okay, any other comments?
My two senses, I think that Mr. Development coming on board, there is a serious amount of dedication, which I don't doubt, I think with the other possible candidates as well, a little bit of a hundred and ten percent, no doubt, they have best interests as well, I too am concerned about not having someone with the experience, I sensed, and I could be wrong, frustration from Mr. Mueller that funding was part of the problem, that there was never enough, a volunteer commission, I, I heard a couple of times now that a superintendent is needed, which is, you know, there's capital of all those to be looked at, and there's there's capital dollars to be looked at and there's, there's operational dollars to be looked at. And, yeah, I mean, it's something that, it's going to be something that really needs to be looked at hard. But I think that with Mr. Belvin's dedication, Mr. Mueller's background, I think that would, that would help.
Consciousness. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any other questions?
So how are we going to do this? Are we going to, we have to pick two people out of the five, correct?
Yep.
So two people get nominated first, those are the two, or do we?
I believe that's what it is.
Sorry, because I missed the last one, so I wasn't sure how.
Sorry, so I'm, are you looking for two nominations at this point?
No, no, just to do each one.
So we're going to vote on Mr. Mueller and then we're going to go to a second now?
A second.
I move that we appoint Douglas Fiss.
But we have, so we have a motion on table, let's handle the first one first.
So we have a vote on?
So we vote for Mr. Mueller, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
All right, now we have a second position on. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion and appoint Kim Shea.
We have a motion to appoint Kim Shea, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second. Any other questions, issues or concerns about board?
I just want to make a comment. I agree with what Sean, what you had said before. We have Mr. Belvin's dedication, Mr. Mueller's background. And I think it's important to have someone in that area as well. And that's why I support Kim Shea.
Okay. Any other comments?
I move that we appoint Douglas Fiss.
We have a motion on the table. We have to finish this motion first. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor of appointing Kim Shea, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion for the second commissioner?
Douglas Fiss.
Yeah, Douglas Fiss, a motion for a second. Any questions, issues or concerns?
Just, I would just make the same comment I made earlier. I think the experience that Mr. Fix has is just going to be valuable up there as we work to go forward. Whether it's North Carver, Middleboro or some combination, I just think it's no substitute for experience.
Okay.
I guess so. So as you see people, there's clearly going to be three votes for him, maybe four. So you're getting the same old, same old for what's going on. Not too happy, like I said. I don't think that the dedication was there in the first place for either one of these, so. And it looks like you just want to go back and, yeah. You want to go back and appoint these two guys and hopefully I'll resign and you guys can have your way. So this is going to cost a lot of money to get this plant up and running because we have, DEP wants it up and running. Period cut and dry, we're going to need water for North Carver. It's going to cost money, all right? So no matter how you look at this, it's going to cost money. It's going to cost taxpayers. It's never going to make money unless we do something to make the plant better. Okay, and I think the only way we can make it better is to scrap it and start with a new green sand system. It's going to cost a lot of money, but it will be compatible with Middleboro. And we can possibly reach out to them and do a district between them and also reach out to Clinton. Because if we have a system that's compatible, it's more valuable, okay? But right now, yeah, I don't think we need the same old, same old, we need something else.
Okay. Here's a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Just a couple of comments. I understand Mr. Belvin's thoughts. I do think we have budget challenges with the North Carver Water District and that's something we may have to look at at some point going future, in the future. But my priority, and I think this is board's priority, but I know, I can only speak for myself, is that we have people in North Carver that are counting on us and the North Carver Water District to provide them good, clean water. And I think the best way to do that is to have people on the North Carver Water District that have experience with water plants. And I appreciate Mr. Belvin stepping forward and I appreciate everything he's done so far. But I just think that it's important to have people with experience on that board. I just wanted to make that statement.
Okay, any other comments?
I would just like to say, however this vote goes, that I hope you stay on the board. I think that having operators and that have experience might, might be advantageous. And I think you generally drive things home, get projects done. So, yeah, I hope you stay on the board.
Mr. Chairman, I agree. All right.
One thing, sorry. Obviously, this is a big decision and I agree with Mr. Belvin and with Mr. Townsend as far as get some new blood as well, but you also need some experience. Mr. Mueller has a, has a good background and what impressed me most was the financial, with the facts and figures that can help Mr. Belvin come up to speed. And I hope that Kim Shea was on there just for another voice. Because we do, we do need to blend this, this commission, in my opinion. Because it's important, there's going to be a lot of tough decisions coming up. I think it has been neglected in the past and I think now it's under the spotlight. More people are going to be looking at this as well as they should. So I also hope you stay on if the vote doesn't go your way. Because, you know, we just, we need to, we need to turn this thing around. It's not going to be overnight, but we need to start the process.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor of appointing Mr. Fix to the, as a commissioner to North Carver Water District, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for everyone for showing up. Next item on the agenda, town administrator update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to the boards where DPW has been down to the COA. They've been doing some work down there.
I know.
Particularly trimming some of the brush along the road down to the beach, creating more parking there and then creating some parking spaces behind the building. It's a reclaimed asphalt, particularly parking for staff, which frees up parking spaces for, for the users there. So, you know, hopefully looking for some more parking there. I know the COA's always challenged with that. Another thing that's happening there, the pickleball bid opening was today. We are moving forward with that project, so there'll be another improvement coming down to the COA area there. Our office, uh...
Excuse, do we have a timetable on when the pickleball might be? Right out, everyone keeps asking all the time, so I'll pick a ball spot right now.
I believe they are trying to be in line to break ground in August, so sometime breaking ground this summer, so.
So probably a fifth, probably next spring, you can see.
The way the pickleball goes, probably playing in the winter. Honestly, it is quite popular. So I know Lain's worked on this too. Our office has been working with Meyer on insurance credits. This is training for our staff, it's kind of a win-win situation. Our staff, our staff gets safety training. Meyer sees that as a way that we reduce liability for the insuring. Comes in a 20, about $20,000 credit for our insurance bill. So it's a good thing, again, it's training for our staff, safety training, you know, chainsaw training, truck training, plowing training, things of this nature. And again, Meyer gives us the credit for that. So it's a good thing for our staff to be doing. And then the only thing I think want to remind you of is I know next week on, no, next week? The week after, I'm sorry. Will be town administrator and select board goals, and I know you're all working on those, so. That'll be my first opportunity.
I think we have July 2nd deadline for somebody.
So that's all I have.
Jim? Any select board announcements, Mr. Towns?
Yeah, I would just, I don't know when this is going to be aired. I know we're not live, but I would remind everybody about the town, townwide yard sale on the, on the 29th. And I'd just like to wish everybody a happy Fourth of July.
Stevens?
I have nothing.
Again, echo Mr. Town's thoughts, I wish everyone a happy Fourth of July, safe one as well.
Wish everyone a happy Fourth of July as well. And also the Carver Crusader Athletic Boosters are having a golf tournament on July 20th at Scroll Run. And we still have a few openings for our golfers as well as hole sponsors. So if you'd like to participate, please let me know. Thank you.
All right, and with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you everyone and good night.